Warren County Board of Education meeting to order for this Monday, June the 28th, 2021. Good evening and welcome to our present through whatever social media you are using. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aha.
Those opposed? The motion to approve the agenda passes. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aha.
All those opposed? Motion has passed for the consent agenda. We have no student advisory to report. Have any recognitions? No recognitions for this month? Facilities and resources?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'm going to handle that. I talked with Alan Hill from Upland via email today and a couple of times over the course of the last month and just want to bring to you again, we are, as I've reported to you the last few months, we're waiting on some punch list items at West to get taken care of. We do have permanent occupancy, so we have no concerns there, but there are some things that we need to get done by the construction company before we pay them their last payment. So we're going to hold that until they take care of that. So just a few items there. I do want to update you. I just talked to Mr. Northcutt, who's in the audience. I'm going to be nice to him and not make him come up here and talk to you tonight. But we did award the roofing bid at the middle school and that passed. And so he received communication from them today that they are concerned about materials. And I believe this board has said that every step along the way, that we're concerned about getting materials. And the contract calls for 90 days, but the materials are way behind. So we're looking at potentially at this point, the first of the year before we get materials is what the construction company is saying. So we'll continue to work on that. I believe it underscores our concerns that we have right now and so we'll continue to work on that. I do want to also let you know that we had a meeting to finalize the information to go out to bid for the additions at Eastside and the middle school. Those are set to bid on July the 22nd. And so we are hopeful to have lots of interest in that project. That can't come soon enough for us, based especially on what I just said, materials. So we want to get that bid and out and take place. So that's pretty much the only items that I have for you in construction. So we'll continue to monitor that, get that taken care of. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Now we will have the operations report.
All right.
Back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Again, appreciate you guys being here tonight. I sent you a draft document last night talking about some of the things that we have discussed related to operating procedures for this coming school year. I do want to say that we talked, you as a board, talked about this in May and of course did take action to make our mask mandate an optional mandate for our summer, our acceleration academies. Do want to update you on those. Our acceleration academies have gone very, very well. We're very pleased with how it's gone. I believe if you talk to your schools and the constituents in the schools, you would see that they would echo that. We had a meeting last Monday with our principals, instructional coordinators, some of our supervisors, and we had some very, very positive reports. One of the things that they said is that, you know, we've had a lot of engagement from our students in this acceleration academy because it's been where we've been focused on hands-on activities, engagement, lots of things that students love to do and teachers love to do. And so we've had a lot of positive coming from that. And so one of the things that I hope that we'll carry into the fall, I just talked to you a little bit, the Commissioner of Education was in Warren County this afternoon. She stopped at Hickory Creek and one of the greatest things was just at the timing. One of the classes was going to take some butterflies out and release them. I've got some great pictures that you'll see on social media and the newspaper was there to cover this. I'm sure you'll see that in the paper. And she did, she got right down in with it with the kids and they released those butterflies and it was a great lesson and kids were loving it and she was loving it and everything went very well. So that has all gone well. I'm happy to report that with the mask mandate being optional, there have been very, very few that have taken the opportunity to wear a mask and we are very fortunate that in the school system, we've had no reported cases. Now, again, understand that that's a much smaller sample size of what we're dealing with. We've got about 1,000 students, whereas in a normal school year, we would have about 6,000 students. So one of the questions when we got together with our principals and instructional coordinators is I said, all right, let's reflect on what happened last year and talk about what's going forward for next year. And so some of the things that were talked about in that meeting, I reflected in this procedures draft. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. I will not read it to you, but again, this is a draft. This is a plan for August. If we learned anything from last year, it's June the 28th and information changes regularly. And I think Bill's going to speak to that here in a little bit about some of the data that he's gotten. But in the draft document, some of the things that we've talked about is that Warren County schools will return to a five-day traditional schedule next year, Monday through Friday. In-person instruction will be provided five days a week. We talked and you all approved a virtual school at the last meeting. I will tell you, I was very, very confident that we would have that approved and things would go smoothly through that. And over the course of the last week or so, the Department of Education's kind of given us a little bit of pushback on that. And I'm happy to report Dr. Bennett's done a ton of work over the course of the last 48 hours and we believe we're on the right track to get that virtual school approved. Very thankful for the work that she's done. Lots of people throughout the state, lots of counties, lots of school systems are applying. And so we see that this is going to be a trend in the state of Tennessee. So with that being said, we will have a virtual learning environment for those that apply and are accepted, but everyone else will learn in person five days a week. Understand also that the governor and the state legislature has said that there will be no virtual learning opportunities outside that. So it will not be like we had this past year. We will not go virtual learning one week and be in person the next week. We will be in person unless the governor were to declare a state of emergency if our numbers were to go back up. If the governor does declare a state of emergency, then a virtual learning code would be available to us, but we don't anticipate that happening. Next section would be the COVID-19 procedures. A lot of questions that I'm sure you're getting is the same as what I'm getting. They're asking about masks, they're asking about social distancing. I would like us to, right now, consider the thought that masks would remain optional when we start in August. I do want to make it clear that anyone that wants to wear a mask would have the wherewithal, if they want to do it, they are encouraged and welcome to do that. But we want this to be a personal choice that they're making. And I will talk more about this in a second, but one of the things that was very important that we talked about in this meeting is that we believe, and we resisted this this past year because we just didn't have as much information as I felt like we needed. But we want to put in place a scale, so to speak, of if everything is low spread, low to minimal spread, which is what we're experiencing in Warren County right now, then we would adopt these procedures. If our numbers rise, then we go to a cautionary procedure. And then if they get really high, then we would go to some procedures that we've had in place this past year. And I'll talk more about that right now. But right now, if everything stays the same in our county, we would allow them an optional mask opportunity. In low community spread, students and staff would only be isolated after a positive COVID test following the Tennessee Department of Health recommendations. So I put it that way to say, if you have a positive test, then we're going to follow those guidelines to say that that student would be isolated. Because of the vaccination procedures that go on, you have to understand that the Department of Health says that if you are vaccinated, that you don't necessarily have to quarantine if you come in close contact. Because of some of the privacy issues that go with that, we felt like as a school system, that's hard to determine who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated. And we don't want to get into the habit of, you know, somebody walking around with a vaccinated tab on their shirt. We can't do that. And so at this point, if, again, if we're in the green section, we would only ask that students that are COVID positive would be isolated. No one else, we would not contact trace at that point. We would not require quarantine if we are in the green section, all right? We would follow the Department of Education attendance guidelines, all that. Now, with that being said, we still have to be extremely careful. I think one of the things that we have going on is that things are good and so we're happy with that, but the virus still exists. So we're not just going to throw caution to the wind. Some of our prevention guidelines that we talk about in here, we're still going to encourage social distancing. We've learned from that. We want to make sure that we're going to do that as needed post signage to communicate how to stop the spread. We're going to clean, disinfect frequently. One of the things that we would like to use some of our ESER money is to provide bottle filling stations in all of our school buildings to replace our traditional water fountains. Water fountains can be a hotbed of germs if we don't take that. So if we can get water filling stations, some of the money we've talked about, about making sure that we ensure our ventilation systems operate properly and that we're taking care of that. And again, students remaining three feet apart when feasible. Some of our building procedures, we of course would remain, we would continue to provide hand sanitizer, limit unnecessary congregations of students and staff. Right now, we would return to allowing students, giving them the opportunity to have some assemblies. We cut that completely out this past year. We would give them the opportunity in a low green environment to continue with some assemblies, just to make sure again that we're handling that appropriately. We would continue to limit our visitors and volunteers when students are present. One of the important things that I talked about principals with was, we still want the community to be involved in our schools, but I think it would need to be on an invitation-only basis for that. If we have people coming in all the time, it's going to be really hard to screen and make sure that we're limiting the traffic. So again, I think it's best in this situation to trust our schools, trust our staff. If we have an outside speaker that wants to come in, that would need to be invitation-only and let schools handle that appropriately as they see fit. So we would handle that. We would like to return to students eating in the cafeteria if at all possible. It's really tough on our staff to, especially here at the high school, to walk around and serve meals and we'd like to return to the cafeteria if we can. Again, if we're in that green environment, then I think we can do that. Again, encouraging students to be safe in that setting, distance where they can. Lockers would be available. I'll tell you, I've heard this from a lot of parents. Kids were carrying really heavy backpacks this past year because lockers weren't available. And if you would, again, at the high school level, because they have A days and B days, they were carrying two backpacks, one for an A day and one for a B day. And so that's hard. So we'd like for lockers to be available, but again, we would discourage congregating at those sections. Drop your books, get your new books, get on and get going so that you can make sure that you're taking care of yourself and we're not doing a lot of congregating there. Again, providing hand sanitizer. Large crowds, I talked about that for school assemblies and extracurricular activities will be allowed. And then on the last page, this is just a graphic that we've talked about, the low community spread. Now, I want this to, you know, this is a draft document because there's a lot of statistics out there that say, okay, here's the community level spread and here's what this says and here's what this organization says. And so I would like, if you all are comfortable with this document, to proceed over the course of the next four weeks before the July meeting, to really sit down and talk to some of our medical professionals and say, what is a reasonable number? What is a reasonable threshold for these green, yellow, and red instances, all right? If, I go back to last year, some places put out, if the county was at a 1%, anything over a 1% virus infection rate, then we go to red. Well, I think if we learned anything, Bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in December, we were well above 1%. And so we want to be reasonable when it comes to these levels. So that's the reason I'm saying this document is a draft. But I also think it's important for our families, our stakeholders, you as board members, to have this information of what we're thinking so that you can provide feedback, too, you can seek feedback, because that's basically what we did last week, or on Monday of last week. We sat around and talked about some of the things that we did, we thought that went well, some of the things that we need to do better. And so we want this to be out there. We would provide this to our stakeholders as well, let them look through it, talk through it. But again, this document allows us to return to some sort of normalcy, but it still keeps an eye on the caution side of things. And again, it really puts things in perspective of, if everything's going well, we follow this green sign that says, follow the plan as outlined, isolation with a positive COVID test required. PPE and masks are optional. If we get into the yellow part, PPE and masks are encouraged. If we get into the red part, PPE and masks are required, all right? So it really gives us some hard and fast rules to follow for the coming school year. So with that, I think Bill's got some things he wants to add to that, so I'll let him add some thoughts. Then after that, happy to have a discussion with you all. I would say, I'm really not asking you all to vote on anything tonight. Obviously, it's your prerogative whether you want to or not. I really just want this to be in front of you, open the discussion, and I think it would be good if we do vote on this in July, but we start the discussion tonight. So Bill, if you'd like to talk.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Swallows and board members. Throughout the pandemic, we've tried to keep everybody, particularly the board, updated on the factual information coming out of the Tennessee Department of Health. I think TDAH has done a clearly above-average job in its surveillance and monitoring COVID-19 situation. That's not to say there's not some room for improvement, but I was very impressed with their efforts. I was also impressed with the, I think, the spectacular job they did in rolling out universal, free asymptomatic COVID testing. Tennessee was doing that with the help of the Tennessee National Guard and other agencies when other states were just struggling to get their frontline health workers tested, just to do the very minimum. Tennessee was making it totally available, anybody who wanted to go have that lovely nasopharyngeal swab. And I had my share of them, but it's not a lot of fun, but that's the way you spot emerging infections. And let me emphasize this thing about emerging infections. The term exponential has very specific mathematical meaning, and I'm afraid it's thrown around a lot in just in general conversation and particularly the media without a real understanding. In dealing with a pandemic, you are dealing with exponential spread. You're not dealing with a straight line spread. And that's what makes it so dangerous and that's what makes it so important to catch early on. If we had known in January, early January of 2020, what we knew two months later, we could have taken some steps to prevent the pandemic, at least here in the United States, or at least tamp it down. Once it gets to a certain level, it becomes exceedingly difficult to control it and it just gets out of hand. This is sort of the tipping point. It just gets out of hand and no amount of resources and effort and sweat and worry can slow it down once it gets out of hand. So that's why I appreciate this draft that Grant has given us. I think it works kind of like a traffic signal. It's got the green, yellow, and red. And it's important for the community to know this because the community is really the driving force in whether we're able to keep a plan going for five days a week in-person learning. We don't want to get in the situation where we start off doing great and right now, as far as our infection rates and new cases, we're doing extremely well. Praise the Lord. It's absolutely wonderful. The pandemic is not over. And as long as the novel coronavirus is out there lurking around and you're having these new variants, the Delta and the Lambda and all these new variants coming in, the risk of reigniting the wildfire is out there. So in my opinion, and we'll vote as Grant suggests in July, but personally, right now, looking at the data, I would be in support of relaxing the mandates we've had in the past, particularly with the masks and following and adopting what the administration has provided here. I think it's a very sound plan. Let's take a look at the data to see where we are. And I think Mr. Harvey has some graphics he can put up for the video. Let's take a look at where we've come from. This, all this data is from the Tennessee Department of Health. Look back at March 30, 2020. That was our first case in Warren County, the first documented case of COVID-19, also known as the SARS-CoV-2. That was the first case. It moved very slowly. The new case count, two months later, over two months later, or three months later, when you got to July 4, 2020, it was still one case that day. If you look at the rolling seven-day average, which is really a more telling and I guess a more reliable way of looking at it, the seven-day average as of new cases as of July 4, 2020 was 2.6, very, very low. But then what happened? You come down four months later to November 14, 2020. On that day, we had 74 new cases, 74 right here in Warren County. The seven-day rolling average of new cases was 40, 4.0.0. Okay, now you go from November 14 to December 16, and what big holiday happened in between that time? When families got together and people got together? That's why they call it the Thanksgiving surge. This occurred right after Thanksgiving. On December 16, 2020, we hit Warren County's high watermark, or you might call it the low-watermark. We had 155 new cases in one day. 155 new cases in one day. That was December 16. The seven-day average at that point was 112 new cases per day. Well, fortunately, when we got past the Thanksgiving peak and things started trending downward, started at the end of December, continued through January, there were ups and downs as you would expect. But now you come out, if you're looking at the graph of new cases with the seven-day average, when you got out here to the end of June 2021, it's almost down on the baseline. It's almost zero. So we have made excellent progress here again. Thank the good Lord for what has happened. I know that we all rejoice with this success and seeing that the COVID virus reduced almost to zero. The most recent seven-day count was 1.7 cases on average, daily average. That's down from the total for the entire pandemic year, starting March 5, 2020, up to June 24, 2021. The average was 28.5. So we're down to 1.7. Too early to say the epidemic is over. We're not at that point. Like I say, as long as the virus is out there lurking in dark corners, it can spring back. And that's what we have to be constantly vigilant about. And I think the Warren County school system has done a superlative job, particularly with the school nurses and the school health officials working under Grant's leadership have done just absolutely amazing job of monitoring and reporting, doing what we were doing then, the contact tracing. But I guess the bottom line is, personally, I'm ready to go back to making masks totally optional and going back to some limited student assemblies and getting together, going back to eating in the cafeteria. I think all that's part of school life, but we just have to keep looking over our shoulder because some bad things can happen if we let it get out of control and it snaps back. Altogether, in Warren County, with a population of about 41,000 during the entire COVID year, we had 5,602 confirmed cases. 5,602 cases of COVID. We had 84 deaths. We had 84 deaths. Tragically, 84 deaths. So as of today, well, the last day for the report was June 24. I think that was Friday, was it Thursday? Thursday, I think. We had one new case, and I call that success, just one new case. Right now, the Department of Health is following only six active cases. Let me mention one other thing real quickly about the data. Early in the pandemic, we thought that COVID was a contagious disease that afflicted older people, particularly the elderly. That's why the Tennessee Department of Health, I think, very prudently made one of its earliest concentrations on the congregate living, the nursing homes, the assisted-living facilities, and going in and doing universal testing in those homes. What happened as the pandemic progressed, the rate of infection slid down the age scale. So now, these very healthy, presumably bulletproof young people, the 20-somethings, who thought they were pretty much immune, that is not the case. The data shows that they are not immune. If you look at the age cohorts for the, this is just, this is for Tennessee, the case rate for the 81-plus cohort is 15,000, I'm rounding this, 15,000 per 100,000. The second-highest age cohort for the infection is the 11- to 20-year-old. And in our school system, we have a lot of 11- to 18-year-olds. That case rate is 15,318, just slightly less than the 81-plus cohort. For that 21- to 30 range, it's over 16,000 cases per 100,000. So let's just dispel that myth about COVID affecting only the elderly. Not true. Not true. It is true that younger people seem to have a more robust response, but that's one reason why we need to be especially diligent in the school system. It does affect our students. So with that said, if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them or probably more wisely refer those questions to the experts.
Mr. Swallows, I had a question for you, if it's okay. Under the virtual learning, you know, the Acceleration School that we've not just finished or will finish next week?
So Acceleration Academy in the summer or a virtual school in the fall?
This summer?
Yes, Acceleration Academy in the summer, yes. It finishes actually Thursday.
Okay. I wondered, you know, you said we had about 1,000. We started out with that. I wondered if a lot, you know, what the percentage of number that dropped out during that time, if any?
Yeah, there were some. I don't have an actual number.
But not a significant number?
No, we're not going to finish with that number. But, you know, I will say that the schools have worked really hard. If you've seen some of the incentives they've gone and some of the perfect incentives that they've done, shoot, I'd kind of like to go myself, to be honest with you. But yeah, we've stayed pretty steady, but we've had some. As summer goes, we've done. Now, one thing that I'm happy to report is that we don't know of any cases that have taken place, any of children that have been reported with positive cases in this Acceleration Academy. I'm actually on an email chain with all the other superintendents in the state of Tennessee, and one of them started a chain email, you know how those go, about 3 o'clock this afternoon, asking if any reported cases. And I just checked. We've got about 35 replies, basically all saying the same thing, that we've not had any problems in the summer academies. Now, again, it's a little harder in the Acceleration summer programs to know exactly what's going on because if a kid doesn't show up, they didn't, they wouldn't necessarily call us and say that's what's happened. But at this point, we've been pretty good.
I've got a question, Mr. Swallows. I know, back to the return policy for this school year, being a big supporter and being directly involved with PTOs and, you know, fundraising and stuff like that, is there, is there going to be any possibility of, you know, picking that back up this school year?
We would hope to return to those normal activities. Again, just, you know, we'd have to be, we'd have to limit it to an extent. We don't want a bunch of people coming into the building, especially when students are present. But again, we would try to return to as many normal activities as we possibly can. So yes.
Well, that's good to hear. That's what I've been hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think this is just, again, an effort to be transparent with our community. I want you all to hear it. I want you all to be able to talk about it. I want you to be able to answer questions when people ask you. Again, not asking you to vote on this tonight. I think this is something that will massage a little bit as we go forward. But if we, if all, I just, I hearken back to last summer when our June board meeting, we said, well, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. And then by the time July rolled around, things were vastly different than where we were. So don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I want to put this out there, get our comments, and put together our plan and get ready for July.
Good job.
Yeah. I'm very impressed with your work on this. Just had one real quick question on the prevention side. Ensure ventilation systems operate properly. We've had some discussions of improving ventilation and indoor air quality. And I believe you've been in contact with some consultants and contractors. What's the bottom line of?
So again, we're working with ESG that we've done in the past and would like to make that kind of a 2.0 part of that project. I will tell you that we've kind of slowed down on that just as, I don't think you all are probably aware, we got some emails of, hey, don't do the bipolar ionization units, you need to do this. And so wanted to kind of let that smooth out before we made a significant investment. But in my conversations with ESG, they feel like that product is extremely safe. But at the same time, we want to make the, we want to make a wise investment. So we're working with them. I have an email actually that was sent from Josh McNeil while I was on vacation that I'm going to return, and we'll get together with them. But I think that's a, even if COVID were not around, we deal with flu and sickness every year. If we can make investments with this money to help us be healthier with our ventilation systems 10 years from now, I think that's what we need to do.
Well, that thing about the bipolar ionization has upside and it may have some downside. So I think it's good maybe to look at that. And the downside may be ozone production. And ozone, you know, in terms of health effects is something you really, really need to look at seriously. But it will kill viruses and germs. It will do that. But then you've got a, you've got that downside. So I appreciate your caution about that.
Any other comments or questions that I can, anything? And if not, I'll move on to our S R 3.0 plan. Okay, so as a part of the S R 3 grant, there are, I think I've, I've talked to you a little bit about, there are pretty some, pretty significant reporting procedures that are going to take place with this S R plan. And one of the things that is required of us as we begin to put our plan together is to really take comment from the public about what they think is important that we use this money for. And that's, that's, that's great. We like that. So one of the things that we've tried to advertise, and I believe you probably got this information, we put out a couple of weeks ago a survey that came from our office. It went to as many people as we possibly could get it to. And I just talked to Ms. Dodd, Ms. Dodd and Dr. Painter are heading up this, and Josh Thaxton, bless his heart, he came on June 1, and we said, hey, we got to do this, and he's run with that. And so just talked to Vicki just a second ago, and we've had about more than 500 people that have responded to that survey, which is really good. We're happy with that, and some really good feedback with that. But with that said, we wanted to give time for public comment. And so we advertised that tonight would be a time for that. We may not, we may have people here, we may not. But at this point, what I'm going to do is going to just basically give an open-mic time for some public comment. What I'm going to ask, if anyone's in the audience that wants to come forward and make public comment on the S R 3.0 money, that we limit it to the priorities that they feel like need to be set forth with this money. And then what we would ask for anybody that wants to make public comment is to share their name and how they, what their interest is in the school system. They may be a parent, they may be just a community member, they may be a faculty or staff member. But we are going to just, at this point, be quiet. I'm going to give them the opportunity to come to the podium there. If anybody wants to make public comment on the S R 3.0 money, I would invite them to the stage at this time. I don't think we're going to have any takers. There's not a whole lot of folks in the audience. So I will say this, we're doing this because it's a requirement. But no, if no one showed up tonight, that's totally fine. It doesn't mean that they cannot have public comment. I would encourage you, go to WarrenSchools.com. That survey is live. It will actually pop up to you. You can click on the link. You can go to that survey. There are several different areas that we've asked people to provide feedback. And so we will be sharing that feedback with you as board members because you'll have to approve this plan once we get there. I will say that it was due August 1. Thankfully, once the Department of Education started to see all the requirements that were going to take place, they pushed that requirement back to August 27. That's the right day, correct, Vicki? So we do have a little bit of time to get this together. We're working hard in July to make sure that happens. But I'm thankful for any feedback that we can get. Thankful for that opportunity to do the S R 3.0 comment. The next item on the operations agenda, this is actually something for approval to you. In your packet, you have the proposed 2021-2022 salary schedules. Those are reflective of the 2% increase across all salary schedules that you approved in our budget at the last board meeting. And hopefully, the county commission will approve in our budget tonight. So we'd just ask that you take a look at these salary schedules and offer your approval or denial.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 salary schedules as presented?
So move.
A second.
Sir, I have a motion and a second to approve the 2021-2022 salary schedule as presented. Are there any discussions? All those in favor? Those oppose? The motion carries to approve the 2021-2022 salary schedule as presented.
All right, thank you. Last item on my operations report is that you have two budget amendments in front of you. These are general-purpose budget amendments for this school, to close out this school year. I will go through those very quickly. I would just give you the idea that budget amendment number one, that is related to salary cleanups. So you all are presented every year with budget amendments at the end of the year. They're simply cleaning up things that we may have over-budgeted, we may have under-budgeted in certain areas. You can see the first one is a state retirement issue. We were decreasing the retirement portion of 71100 and moving that to the stabilization fund. Vocational education, technology, we have a number of items there that we're moving from salary schedules, or I'm sorry, salary line items into equipment. And basically, that will allow us to purchase more equipment at the end of this. The director's schools line item, I do want to call attention to that when Mary Jennifer budgeted last year for my salary line item, that it was not the insurance that the school system pays toward my individual insurance plan. That was not budgeted. So she is simply moving some line, some money from line items there over to cover for that budget. Also, maintenance of plant, we had some accrual issues there. And so no, no change in budget. It's all, as you can get to the bottom of it, 75,900 over to 75,900. So it's just moving from one line item to the next, but it does need your approval. It was approved by the financial management committee and the county on Thursday night.
Do I have a motion to approve the general purpose 2021 to 2022 budget amendments, one and two?
I move to approve the two recommended budget amendments.
I have a second.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second to approve the general purpose 2021-2022 budget amendments, one and two. Are there any discussions? All those in favors? All those oppose? The motion carries to approve the general purpose 2021-2022 budget amendments, one and two.
I have one other item that's not on your agenda that I'm going to do in operations. This, this board approved a collaborative conferencing committee. I believe that was in December, our November-December meeting. We have actually had one resignation from our district from one of the members on the collaborative conferencing committee. Brent Estes has taken another job in another district. We certainly want to wish him well as he goes. We hate to lose him in Warren County. But the collaborative conferencing committee has submitted to us a replacement. It would come from the alternate that was picked. And so they have submitted the name Amanda Gibbs, who was an alternate. But we simply need you as a board to accept Amanda Gibbs as a replacement for Brent Estes in the collaborative conferencing committee.
I move we accept Amanda.
I have a second to accept Amanda Gibbs replacing Brent Estes on the collaborative.
Conferencing.
Conference.
Committee.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to accept Amanda Gibbs as the conferencing committee replacing Brent Estes. Is there any discussions? All those in favor? All those oppose? Motion carries.
And that does it for me on operations. I'll turn it back over to you for curriculum achievement.
Mr. Bill? Curriculum and achievement.
Okay, Madam Chairperson, we have just one item for approval. This is, this is part of the overall cleanup and I guess rationalization of the board policies. This one is, what number did we assign to this? It's on the agenda. 2.601, I was looking right at, right at, okay. This has to do with fundraising activities. And as I think all of you know, over the years and across different school systems, it's the, it's the fundraising activities that can sometimes create some pitfalls. And I think we all need to, need to be wary of that. And that's why we need to have some strong, very explicit policies in place. And I think this, this answers that. You know, basically, you know, like most policies and laws and regulations, you know, you depend upon the common sense and intelligence of the people who are actually doing the work and their integrity to do the right thing. And I don't see anything in this, in second reading on this fundraising activity policy that would, that would go, go out of, out of range on those principles. But I am going to move for adoption on second reading. But I would like to point out, under Section 4, Paragraph E, this is on the side of transparency so that parents and the community will know how much profit and what kind of margin the school system is realizing. This is a requirement in the disclosures. If you look under Paragraph 4, Section E, margin of profit and how it is to be paid to the schools, I think that's very important, that all parties know what kind of deal we have with the vendors and the contractors who work with us on these student fundraising activities. Would also note, under Paragraph 6, students shall not be excused from a regular class to participate in fundraising activities. And so that's, I think that's important to note. And I want to note finally, under Item 7, no. And I want to note finally, under item seven, no quotas shall be imposed on students involved and their efforts shall be voluntary. Students who do not participate in fundraising activities shall not be punished or discriminated against in any way. Just emphasizes the principle that I think that we've always had, that participation is voluntary. And there'll be no, no negative consequences for students who opt out. So those are, I guess, my main concerns, and this policy does answer the concerns I've had for quite some time about our fundraising. Fundraising is absolutely essential, as the preamble says, the fundraising is to supplement and not replace the funds that this school board is obligated to provide for the support of the education program. These are supplements, not replacements. So with that said, Madam Chairperson, I want to move for adoption on second reading of policy two-point-six-zero-one.
I have a motion to adopt policy two-point-six-zero-one fundraising activities on second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt policy two-point-six-zero-one fundraising activities on second reading. Are there any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion carries to adopt policy two-point-six-zero-one fundraising activities on second reading. Do we have any other business?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, we do have a couple of things. In front of you, I believe, did you give them a paper copy? So in front of you, you've got another budget cleanup at the end of the year. This is from the food service budget, and so this is a budget amendment for food service. Again, the same thing that you just approved with the other budget amendments out of general purpose. This is simply moving forty thousand from food supplies into some other salary line items. Again, not making, taking any more or less, it's simply forty to forty. They're just moving them in line items, but it does need your approval. Again, it was approved by the county financial management on Thursday.
Madam Chairperson, I want to move for adoption on the recommendation of the administration of the food service budget amendment as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the child nutrition budget amendment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the child nutrition budget amendment. Are there any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion carries to approve the child nutrition budget amendment.
All right, thank you. One other item to vote and one that I want to inform you on. Also, you have a, we are, you have in front of you a recommendation from Vicki Dodd, our federal programs director. We are asking you all to approve the loan, tell me if I'm saying this right, this is a loan bidder, right? We only had one bid for this. So we are partnering with Glimpse K twelve. It's a company that is beginning to have a lot of business in the state of Tennessee. If you see them, they are a partnership where they come in and we take all of our data, and it funnels all into one area and gives us the opportunity to look and check and make sure that we are making wise decisions. Return on investment is what they say. I'll give you the example. We may purchase a software package that our students are using. Glimpse K twelve will take this and use their software to give us an idea on what return of investment we're getting, whether or not it's being used efficiently and effectively, and if it's making a difference for our students. And so this money is actually going to come out of Title II, correct? Title II, and that is federal money that we're going to use to support this. So we're asking you to approve tonight, Warren County Schools, forty-one thousand five hundred for the ROI, return on investment analysis programming, Glimpse K twelve.
We also have annual feed of thirty thousand five hundred, did I look at that right?
So that would be the following years if we, if we, if we continue with it, yes. There would be an initial setup of forty-one thousand, but that's for the training that our district would undertake. So again, not a general purpose expenditure, this is a Title II federal expenditure, one that we think will give us a good idea of what we're using and what needs to go and what needs to stay.
Do I have a motion to approve the bid from Glimpse K twelve with the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred for a return on investment analysis program?
Madam Chairperson, I'll move for approval of that request for the Warren County Schools Federal Programs Department for the return on investment analysis.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Glimpse K twelve in the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred for a return on investment analysis program. Are there any discussions?
Is there a minimum number of years for this contract, or is it a year-by-year basis?
It's a year-by-year.
If I understand it correctly, the recurring cost on page ten is thirty thousand five hundred?
That's correct.
If we elect to continue.
That's correct. It's a significant investment, but we are very impressed. It wasn't just, wasn't just Vicki and myself, we sat with a group of educators and a number of our friends in the upper Cumberland school systems have adopted this and used it, and we're very impressed with it. Again, we want to be smart with where we invest our money, and so any kind of programs we're using, we want to make sure they're being used well and efficiently, and this program helps us put all that data in one place.
I think it's always good to, you know, make sure that we're getting the maximum efficiency out of every dollar we spend, and this program seems like it would do that.
That's correct.
And Vicki, I'm sure done a good job, I've been checking it out. Got a lot of faith in her.
I have a motion, a second, are there any more discussions to approve the bid from Glimpse K twelve in the amount of forty-one-five for a return on investment analysis program? All those in favor? Those oppose? Motion carries to approve the bid from Glimpse K twelve in the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred for a return on investment analysis program. Is there any other business?
Madam Chairperson, let's leave on a positive note as we adjourn the meeting. I just want to point out that the Warren County Pioneer baseball team and the Warren County Lady Pioneer softball team were honored at the Rotary Club of McMinnville last Thursday. We had Coach Jerry Gooby Martin, the skipper for the softball program, very, very successful program, and also Philip King, who's just really getting into the program with us this year, facing all the headwinds of the COVID pandemic, and still, they rose above it all and had had very successful seasons. And I just want to compliment softball players and supporters and coach and assistant coaches, and same goes for the baseball program. So compliments to you all. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.